Who wants to, Jennifer?
My name is Jennifer Maxwell. And I am just here to kind of do an FYI on the extension elections that are coming up. I know that was one contentious item in all the emails that had come to you guys. So the board, I've been going into board meetings pretty regularly. And they have been trying to make the elections a little bit more, for lack of better words, fairer this year. And we just want to communicate that they are going to be November 16th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Presbyterian Church. I'd like to encourage everybody to go and vote. This listing that I provided a copy to the commissioners, there's four PDC areas, agricultural, family and consumer sciences, 4-H youth, and community development. And then down below by districts, those are the ones that we know that have put in their consent to be nominated at this time. They need 12 mains, there's 12, going to be 12 openings in every area of there. So if you know of anybody that would be willing to serve and you know what district they're in, they can send their stuff to Becky Parsons. But I'm just here to try to encourage everybody to come vote, please. Any questions?
The extension districts are like commission districts.
They are like commission districts. And we just need bodies there, we need people to come vote. My understanding how they're going to do it, you don't have to be there for the whole 6 to 8. Is those of their people that are there at 6 o'clock, they're going to do a little FYI on the PDCs and then separate by commission districts and give you your ballot to vote. I know that if you come at 7:30, you're still going to be able to vote, you just won't get the little info, but that's okay. Just please come vote, because I mean, there hasn't been just a handful of people in the past because they never knew about them. So this is just part of the thing, trying to educate, get the community more involved in this. You guys made some changes, so this is, they're being proactive and trying to do that.
I believe. Who's eligible to vote?
Anybody, it's anybody. And it's not like they're going to look at your ID, it's not to that process yet.
Okay, but if you're in District 3, let's say.
Yeah.
You can only vote for District 3?
That's correct.
Okay.
But you're going to have three different, there's four different areas. So you'll get to vote for different people. But we're looking for interested people as well. So if you know of anybody.
There's also been some improvement on the, there's been questions about the chain of command during the voting process, which now it's going to be the whole board that handles and counts the votes, I believe.
That is correct, so thanks for bringing that up, Eric. They did announce at previous meetings, we asked who's going to be in control of the ballots, the ballot boxes and everything. And they're going to, it's the board, and they're going to count the ballots that night. So if you wanted to stay, you could stay and see who potentially gets elected. So the agents are not going to be in control of anything.
So it sounds like quite a few good steps. I also, they had an announcement in the paper, it has been publicized, so, which is another good step. And I put that, I gave the cutout to Wes, and he's going to put it on the county website. So if anyone wants to see that information, if you haven't, don't see it anywhere else, go to the county website, you'll be able to see the advertisement of for election.
And there's been some Facebook posts, we've been trying to share them as much as we can. So that's all I'm here, I mean, any other questions?
I have another question. So you had mentioned 12 openings, correct?
Correct.
On the PDC position. So there's seven people listed here, so there could be five more. Can it be heavy in one district, or does it matter?
It doesn't matter, because you're going to basically be able to vote for, so there's four PDCs in three districts. So you're going to be able to vote for four different people in your area, because there's 24 on the PDCs. 12 will go for another year, it's two-year terms, and 12 come off this year. So I don't know if some of the existing people are going to re-up. I don't know, the way it sounded from the meeting, it was at the very end, is that they're still looking for people. Sheila Chalfant asked, are we going to be able to see the ballot ahead of time? It didn't sound like there was going to be great promises on that, because they're still looking for people. If they do get it available, they'll put it out on the extension website, is what we were told, maybe a day or two ahead of time. If we see that, there's a good number of us that are watching these things, then we'll try to push it out there Facebook-wise as quick as possible, can email to you guys and push it on the county side. It's just now getting the word out.
Okay.
Because nobody knows about these things.
Well, and with those categories, one person from each district will represent each category, correct? So like, if Jack, Casey, and Eric all were in District 3 and said, we want 4-H youth development, only one of us would be chosen for that.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So you need more.
We need a wide range, and it looks just from this that we're kind of lacking in District 1, as far as it goes. But we don't have enough in District 2 or 3 right now either, to even cover. And they're not being really, I mean, I don't think they care what area you resonate with the most. Like, I could overlap in like, three areas. So I told them to put me in potentially an area that needs help, like, I didn't care. Just don't put me in agriculture, is what I said. So, I mean, and that's kind of a hard one. So I'm just here to encourage you all, please come vote. And if you know of anybody to, they have to do that consent to nomination, and I can get that form to you if needed. That's all.
Okay. Is the location, the 515 Seabury Street?
No.
What's the, well, what's the address?
Oh, the Presbyterian Church here in Atchison.
Oh, here in Atchison, I'm sorry.
In Atchison, I'm sorry, thanks for making that clarification. Yes, it's here in Atchison, you go on the east door.
And if we find someone interested to put their name in, they just email the extension county?
No, send your nomination forms to Becky. And you should have her email, Becky Parsons. I mean, they could, it says on the, but please send it to Becky Parsons. Sorry. Anything else?
Thank you very much, thank you Jennifer.
Thank you.
Well, my name is Dr. Robert Fast, for those who don't know me. And a few months ago, I was lucky enough to be picked to represent Atchison County, is one of the representatives of Atchison County, to the Northeast Kansas multi-county health system. I have trouble with that, because back in my day, it was the tri-county health system. But at any rate, I'm here to kind of stand up for the local health department and explain some things, because I think they're getting a bit of an unfair rap in recent meetings that I've watched. They're not near as powerful as they are made out to be. Most of what they do is they are told to do, they don't choose to do it themselves. They don't have the power to tell people to wear masks or not, they can recommend it, in fact, CDC recommends that for that mask. But they're not in charge of enforcing masks like anybody, especially in school. School boards make the decision about masks, not the public health department. I don't like masks either, anyways, although I wore one for a lot of my career. But, you know, they're just doing what they're told, they're told to recommend is the best approach. They also don't pressure anybody, let alone the school, about what, how they should respond to a positive test within the school. It was, well, we're talking about Moore Hill, of course, is the one. And they kept coming up about one positive test. Well, one positive test is about all it takes. Looking up things, one positive test led to 16 deaths due to the Chicago funeral explosion. One positive test led to 52 cases at choir practice in the state of Washington. So one positive test means more than it's been, the impression you've been given. And again, I don't believe they pressured anybody to shut down anything. We each feel pressure about COVID anymore. You know, do we wear a mask or do I wear a mask? You wear it into the restaurant, but you'll have to wear it to eat. There's not been a more political disease than I've ever heard of, except maybe a few centuries ago, they argued about whether your symbol should be called the Italian box, or the French box, or the Spanish box, but that's about as far as it went. And reporting communicable diseases is not new. New York reported TV tests way back in 1890s. A lot of TV cases that didn't have tests. So, you know, again, we all feel pressured in one way or another, what we should or shouldn't do. And the whole COVID thing is like a doggone roller coaster, do this, don't do this, take this, don't take this. How many times have things changed in the last year and a half, you know, we've been going through this? In fact, there's new stuff just today, which I haven't known yet. But our, our public health officer, Lori Fordy, has let me know something, she's been on the, on the.
KDHE?
Yeah, with KDHE today about that. One other thing is that there was an accusation of releasing private medical information. That's not true. There is a law that states that positive COVID tests have to be reported to the state of Kansas. It's not choosing, it's not HIPAA, it's law. And it also works that if you go have a test in Missouri, it gets reported in Kansas. Okay, if you're a, well, if you're a Kansas resident, it gets reported in Kansas. So nobody's sneaking around the corridors reporting things, or telling things now to school that they shouldn't. I did check on some of the problems that were mentioned about tests being available. And I guess there have been some shortages of the release of rapid tests here in town, because there's been shortages in a lot of places for them. The comments contributed to the staff at the health department don't sound like the ladies I have come to know them. They are trying to do their job in a difficult situation, and they're being more or less told how to do their job by higher-ups. But they're taking the local heat for it, because they get stuck enforcing it. And you've got people down there that are on the verge of quitting, because they feel so abused and disrespected. They can't even, when they leave, they get heat from people about their position in the public health department, and what they're happy to tell people to do or not do. And lastly, in particular, I take issue with someone coming before you and implying that these ladies are not competent. That is an insult that I don't think they deserve in any way, shape, or form. So, you know, that's kind of my, what I came here to say and try to impress upon you, that, you know, we're down one nurse in the public health department already. Keep irritating those people, we'll be down more than one. And they aren't easy to find. Yes, the public health department's a better job than the night nurse or the hospital, or some other thing. But in the present COVID environment, it's not, not a real fun, comfortable place. So that's what I came here to say.
My hat's off to you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming in front of us, and as a board member, and giving us an update and your thoughts, I appreciate it.
Well, I would appreciate it also, if people could learn to come to the health department, or the multi-county health department with their issues, rather than jump right up the ladder to all of you.
Good point. Because I haven't, you know, you would think that, me being a commissioner and on the board, I would be getting these, I'm not hearing it until they show up here. And I know even the health department's going like, why haven't they, they haven't talked to Cristiano or Lori? They just have a problem and they're coming here. And so I hope you don't mind me, at this point, interjecting, because it's either going to be now or during the commissioner comments. But I know that all three of us, I mean, HIPAA violation to me is, you know, the accusation is very serious. Take, I take it very serious, and I've been looking into it, as well as Dr. Fast and Sheila. We've all been, three have been kind of comparing notes. Sheila wanted to be here and got tied up at work, so she couldn't be here, but she's on exactly the same page, she's found out the same information, especially with the Missouri reporting to Kansas. We've all been very interested on how that transpires. And that the KDHE is basically an extension of our own health department. So reporting to them, or that informational release to them, I mean, they're bound to. Your home doctor has to, if you go to have tests done, a lab has to report to KDHE. And, and through that chain of command, there's over 70 different reportable diseases that fall under that category. So if we didn't have reporting to KDHE, things like lead paint could go unreported, or because someone didn't release it. So it's very important that they be able to take that information and do the contract tracing, and, and the backgrounding on this is public health. And that, because KDHE does not know, or knows about it, doesn't mean that it's public information. So that's what I found out, and I wanted to stick up for Sheila. Had just texted me this morning, said she couldn't be here and apologize, but she's right on board with us, so, thank you for coming.
Other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Has everybody had a chance to redo the next?
I have, I have no further.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept.
Move this second, I will tell you, I'm going to abstain, because I wasn't in attendance. On favor, Senator Bobbey saying aye.
Aye.
I abstained. Passes to one extension. Mr. Comments and committee reports, Mr. Quinn.
Well, as we wrapped up a week of elections, I just want to say thank you so much to our Atchison County clerk, and all of her staff and county staff, as well as Commissioner Knoll, for helping with that process. This is the first year that I've been able to see behind the scenes of what goes into it. And it was really very interesting just how much goes into it. Because I, you know, previously, you're on the smartphone at home, the polls close at 7:00, and you're just waiting, and you're so excited to see, you know, the numbers come in. But the checks and balances, and the process, and all of the folks that give their day to help us run successful elections is, is just mind-blowing. And I just want to make sure and say thank you to everybody, because it was a late night, at 12:30 AM, is when they actually turned out the lights at the courthouse and walked out, so that.
That was an early night for change.
Yeah, yeah, so, and this was a small election, I mean, and, and so with that also, the voter turnout, I know they posted was about 15% of Atchison County. And just everybody being mindful that your voice does matter, and how much elections mean to, to just everyone here on a local level, also. And then the only other comment that I had is just, I want to say thank you again to constituents and my fellow commissioners for talking to people in Atchison County, and people taking interest in the sales tax topic. The past week especially has been very informative to me as a new commissioner, and brainstorming, and getting questions answered by our county counselor, and different things. And I look forward to next Tuesday, our afternoon meeting. We will have Justin Prejean from the city of Atchison on with us as well. And then I know Eric and I had constituents that want to come and just learn, and just ask questions, and understand it better. And that's what we as commissioners need, is people to pay attention and give us their input, because that's what, at the end of the day, that's our job, is to represent the people and make good decisions based on them. So thank you to everyone that's kind of paid attention.
Okay, there is some COVID news with the childhood vaccine that has just been approved. And I had just contacted Lori about when that would be available in Atchison County. She said it's, as soon as they kind of work out the kinks and everything, it'll be here when they get the vaccine. They are, she is working on setting up clinics at the schools to have clinics for the children.
They've already scheduled one for the 409.
Has, okay, it's been scheduled, so, yeah, I, so I've been kind of keeping track of that. And then, as Dr. Fast had alluded to, Lori's been on the phone this morning with KDHE. There's some new things coming out about the COVID, we've not been quite privy, so we will keep people informed on what's coming down with, with new developments on that. So I think that's all I have this morning. And they, she did say that they do have the testing supplies, and they're testing daily. So I just want to make sure that people, if you need to test, get tested.
The good news is that cases are coming down.
Yes, statewide and county-wide, so the numbers are looking better.
Be vigilant, I have nothing to add. You did this before the board, we should point you at something.
Yes, so I would like to make a motion to, after many conversations with department heads and elected officials, that we are going to lock the east doors to the courthouse, and only utilize the north doors for our entrance, so we have one entrance. So I would like to make that motion that we do that.
I'll second it.
Let's move it second, is there any further discussion?
There's going to be some signage at the bottom of the steps, so people, okay.
At the top and the bottom.
Yeah, that way people don't make it all the way up and realize, oh gosh, now I got to go around.
Or people are going to be free to exit that door.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I mean, that has to be for fire exit, but I mean, just as a natural thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, or just.
It's basic security. So, okay, on the favor, Senator Bobbey saying aye.
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 East doors are going to be locked, okay. Joe Snyder, John Deere Motivator, lease purchase, good open. Before you do that, Mark, go introduce yourself to.
Sure. My name is Mark Zellner, I'm the finance director for Atchison County. It's a newer position, and kind of just open everyone with budgets and finances, and hoping out where needed, so.
Election and.
Everything.
Everything, you know, jack of all trades.
I will say that he's, for the short few weeks he's been here, he's been a real impact, so.
Very big impact, thank you.
But he's a repeat customer, I mean, this is your second stint with the county.
Yes, correct.
So, welcome back.
Thank you. Would you like me to open? First one is from Exchange, National Bank. What exactly would you like me to read here? The proposal, or?
Yeah.
Just the figures?
Interest rate, the interest rate.
Okay, interest rate is 2.05%, semi-annual payments of $32,498.89.
You say 2.05%?
Correct. Second one is from GN Bank, Fort Worth, Kansas. This interest rate is 1.98% with a payment of $32,438.438 even, estimated. Third is from First Option Bank of Troy. Interest rate of 1.65%, payment of $32,171.19. Fourth is from the Union State Bank of Atchison. Interest rate of 3.125% with a payment of $33,274.74. That was all that I have.
Do we normally have them looked at, or do we want to make a motion today?
Well, is there anything that, this basic simple interest rate, add a?
That's what I don't know on this, whether there's anything that needs to be.
There's no need to, unless any of them had something in there with special notes or additional fees. There's no need to have them. Is there any additional fees or anything of those bits, Mark? Or is it just the interest rate and the payment?
Just the interest rate and the payment generally, I mean, they have some breakdown of each of the payments, and when they're due, and final payment.
No pay, no extra fees or origination fees?
No, additional fees are none.
The Bank of Troy was successful the last time we did that.
That's, that's pretty good.
Yes, no additional fees.
I'll make a motion that we go with First Option Bank of Troy, an amount of 1.65% interest.
I just, can I ask you a couple more questions?
Sure.
I was just curious what the principal amount was, and how long of the loan? Because what is the number of interest that we're talking about? I mean, I know the rates, but.
It was for $307,394.54, analyzed over five years. Semi-annual principal and interest payments made on around February 15th and July 15th, to coincide with our tax distributions. And also provide sync them up, so we don't have them coming through at different times. It ends a little easier for lots of municipalities.
Okay. Sorry, I just wanted to better understand that. And again, we go back to always wanting to keep it in county, but with the difference. And we had this happen last time, and I talked to the local banks, they were understanding about it. So I just want to make the public aware of why we make the choices we do, but I would second your motion.
Any further discussion? On the favor, Senator Bobbey saying aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Joe Snyder, you're.
We have a purchase order for PT 125 roller from Van Keppel, and it would be a lease purchase also. But last week, it, it was presented to the commission, and they were in favor of it, and we're just giving up the purchase order for $65,000. It's got 470 hours on it, it's a huge unit, but it will have some of morning, we'll be able to purchase a little extra one.
So the chairman entertained a motion to approve a purchase order, GW Van Keppel Company, in Kansas City, Missouri, for $65,000, for 2020 Volvo PT 125 roller, by a motion.
So left.
Move by Commissioner Quinn.
Second.
Commissioner Knoll, any further discussion?
And this, this roller is used for the chip and seal.
On the favor, Senator Bobbey saying aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. I have the USD 377, the Atchison Sports Activity Fitness Maintenance Request, it's a quarterly request. The 377 amount is for fourth quarters, $2,500. And the AASAF is for $10,000. This is, comes out of the sales tax, the quarter sin sales tax. Chairman entertained a motion to allow the chairman to sign the document.
Also moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Quinn. Knoll, seconded by Commissioner Quinn. Any further discussion? On the favor, Senator Bobbey saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Protocol replacement project. Protocol Replacement Project. Who's on for that?
Trevor Tedd from Okeanee Regional Councils on the Zoom.
Trevor is, uh.
There he is.
Do we have, uh, Brian on there?
Uh, he was.
I thought he was.
Is he not on the, I can't see him on the roster.
Let's see, we go under Brian down or a plant. What was the certification?
Oh, oh, that's, yes, okay. I thought it was actually a point to be discussed.
So Trevor, you might go ahead and tell us what the bid requirements were and, you know, I think it's three weeks. Might give the public a little bit of information.
Yeah, um, so we applied for a Rural Preservation Grant through Kansas SHIPO. Um, and you guys were awarded that in order to, um, receive those funds. You have to follow various rules with the, the procurement. Um, so we drafted up the documents, um, as per the, um, specifications required by SHIPO and sent those out a few weeks ago. Um, you're required to have those posted for twenty-one days and to directly solicit a minimum of three, uh, contacts. Um, and then during the bid opening, that has to be public, which is what we're doing today, hopefully. Um, and then I will need copies of various forms that I've sent over. Um, so that's where we're at.
And we have two bids, is that correct? Should you want to go, give us the two bids?
And Brian's on his way. He was leaving the courthouse.
And we opened one last week.
Yeah, I, I think there's probably a little more explanation that, that would need to be given here. And that is that we did send out a packet for soliciting bids and it was set for bid opening except for last week. Which, which may not be in compliance with a twenty-one day requirement under the State Historical Preservation Office requirements. But it's fully compliant with Kansas law and with the commission's, uh, guidelines. And of course, we have one response last week. Um, since that time, Michelle Phillips, the county clerk, has talked to me about, uh, she was gone that day. And that there was another bid that was emailed to her, uh, prior to the start of the meeting at one o'clock. That should have been considered and would have been considered likely had she been, uh, had she been present. And so there was some, uh, some discussion about that. And I was prepared to discuss with you the, uh, bid documents themselves. Do you say that the commission has the authority to waive irregularities in the bid? Uh, and has the ability to reject any of all bids. There is case law, uh, from the Kansas Appellate Courts that, uh, that support both of those positions. That you do have the authority to, uh, to waive irregularities in the bid process. And this would certainly fall within the regularity of the bid process. Um, I, as a matter of future reference, we may want to nail down if we're going to require paper copies to be in that office. We may want to nail that down. I, I know, uh, in the past, we had, had received some, some by fax. In those days, if any of you are old enough to remember a fax. I, I definitely.
I haven't got two yet.
I don't know, tell us. Yeah. So, uh, that's, um, that had. That's, I think, more accurately the complete, complete story as to where we stand here today. Uh, I think you have, uh, that, that second bid, I have not seen it. Uh, and so I guess you haven't seen it either because people are printing it, so.
I'd like to point out that, yeah, as commissioners, we haven't seen, we didn't know anything about it. So we, we don't know who that bid would be from or how much or, you know, it's been completely in the clerk's hands. So, I mean, if, if we choose to take that bid, it, it, it's not like we know that there's somebody slipping something in or. Cause we, I have no idea who it is. I don't think anybody else has a way of knowing who sent in the second bid until it's been revealed, correct?
Well, she, yeah, she just had sent it to us after the fact. We had our bid opening last week.
But was that stated in there? I don't remember that it was stated who that bid was coming from.
Yeah.
It was.
We have it now. But I, I just want to say that this was on the up. Like everything was done according to plan. We were in open session last week. We opened the paper copy from BRT. Um, we went through that motion and then she was for, gone for a doctor's appointment. Found that this was done. So on circumstances like this, this is good for us to grow. And now we were going to change that everybody hand delivers. We have a paper copy. That way if someone's gone or they missed something or in the circumstance of the C V V G, when we learned that sometimes things happen with emails. Spam filters, zero, you know, filter them out. There's, there's all these things. So, um, I think this has given us a chance to, um, to grow and to learn from this. Um, but I would also know that everything has been done ethically and in accordance of, you know, time stamped. And she has been working with county counselor and, um, I think she was getting the BRT one because we opened it last week and I don't know what that was.
So do we need to take action to waive irregularities or is that something that we need to? Is this considered an irregularity and then do we need to waive it?
Well. Typically, after bids are open for this type of project, the department head that's handling it will take a week or maybe more. Sometimes more to review all of the bids and come back to you with a recommendation. And that's sort of what I thought was going to happen today. Although I don't see, uh, Mr. Oswald here today. But, um, I think you should have, it, it's up to you with how you want to proceed. But if, if you want to consider the bid, you should, I think, have it open here in, in public and, uh, then have your discussion. Trevor, do you want to add to this conversation?
Yeah, I would say the only irregularity and they'd be worried about is that they do require that that was posted publicly twenty-one days before the closing of the bid. So you'll need evidence of that and that the bid openings should probably occur, uh, twenty-one days after that. So I would recommend, uh, identifying this as the, the first reading for both of those bids. And then I'll need a copy of the selection criteria as well, uh, how you guys evaluate those bids. Um, and then you can make whatever choice. Um, but you will have to await SHIPO's written approval of the processes before you can finally, uh, award that contract.
So, if I understand you correctly, that we need to wait another week to make the recommendation?
I think it was posted three weeks ago, so you should be at the twenty-one days now, but.
Yeah. Well, I, that's not going to cure it because the notice that was posted said it was for last week. So you can't just pick an arbitrary date in the future and say, well, right now, we're going to pretend that this was the date that was there. So, uh, you may reject all bids and rebid it. Is there, if there's, is there time to do that within the grant?
Yes, there is. You guys have, uh, until August the next year, so.
So. I, I think it's, I think we're better off to start over again.
I would agree with that.
So reject all bids and send out a, a new one. What, 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 Trevor, what date do you want those set for?
Um, whatever works best for you. It'd need to be in twenty-one days. And I know we're looking at holidays, so.
I've got a question.
Yes.
Since we've opened and we know the one bid and we haven't the other, is that an unfair bidding practice now to the second bidder?
Great question.
He, since one is public and one is not, and is that going to create a problem?
I would agree with that. Yes, that's a good point.
I, I think that's really up to your consideration, but releasing a, a second bid, just, I think, maybe multiplies the problem, multiplies the issue. Well, I'm just gonna give you my opinion. That's only my opinion. I think we should start over. And I understand what you just said, that only one bid is known. Not both bids, so.
Both bids are known by the second bidder. That's, that's where, and I know, I, I, I get what you're saying, but you know, I, I, I just, I want to be.
Both bids were in place by the deadline.
Yes.
We failed to have the bids available for the opener.
You may.
And we didn't do the twenty-one days. We just did the fourteen days. So there's all kinds of stuff going on here. So I'm gonna defer to counsel of Trevor to give us some advice. I mean. If there's time to do, well, that's within your discretion, I think, on whether to release it. I, I don't think there's any legal requirement that you release it or that you not release it. So that's within your discretion. You just need to decide.
Hmm. Oh, what a tangled web we weave, as they say.
I, I guess the other commissioners have got a way. Your eye weighed in. I think we should start over. And, but I understand that that's not a perfect solution either.
So my gut is telling me to proceed and continue with the explanation and the fact that Michelle has it documented in her email. If there's questions by the other participant, both were in prior to, the only piece here we missed was reading aloud last week. What you already have time stamped that was in your inbox.
Yeah, the twenty-one days. Cause if someone else might have bid if they had.
I'm with you, Eric, though. If you're not changing the scope of the bid, you just put somebody's cards on the table. That's, that's not.
You know, I, I, you know, there's, I can see points both directions. That's the reason this is kind of a tough one. Cause I want it to be as fair and open as possible. And my initial gut says to open it because of that it was time stamped. It just wasn't made available.
Trevor, the bid process was fourteen days. How big a problem is that?
I think that's the, that's the main problem. I think SHIPO may throw the whole thing out if it wasn't allowed twenty-one days for the bids to come in. So you may want to reject the bid in error, I guess. Make that as public and known as possible so that they understand that it wasn't rejected due to price or whatever. So no one else thinks that's the reasoning whenever they go to bid as well, but.
With, I'll, I'll go with your recommendation then, but you know, I want to.
Are you gonna make a motion to reject all bids?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to reject all bids.
I know.
It's a tough one.
I mean, I guess I would second that based on the guidance we are being given. Um, but I would like us to correspond with these, um, folks to let them, to explain that to them.
It's been moved and seconded. Do I have further discussion?
So on the, we're gonna release this again. We're gonna have the new criteria of the twenty-one days plus having a, a paper copy in hand and timestamped by, okay.
So I just have a couple more questions. Um, and don't take this wrong, Trevor, cause I'm just trying to better understand the process here. Um, cause I was taking notes that, so MoCann drafted the bid documents, correct?
We assisted with the draft of the bid document.
So we just didn't realize that we were allowing other methods of, of delivery. So these are things we just need to learn moving forward so we can improve processes of.
Streamline of.
Yeah, we'll have a specific method of delivery, um, in the future. And then the days also know that, um, that way our calendar.
And that twenty-one days would also need to be specified. And I assumed it was, it went through SHIPO as well, so they also should have caught it. So there's a lot of, lot of, uh, eyes on those docs that it must have slipped through, I guess.
I mean, hey, everybody's human, mistakes happen. And I think this is just a, a place for us to learn, learn and move forward. So I wanted to understand that.
So we only have one bid.
Last week. And so that's, the, the problem is the. Yeah. Um, so we're gonna rebid. We haven't voted yet.
All the favors, they could probably say aye.
Aye.
That's all I have in our new business. Does anybody, uh, have anything else in our new business they want to bring up? Any older unfinished business? County counselor up to. Tax sales proceeding and, uh. Yeah, I don't have anything else. Okay. Uh, any need for an executive session?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, what's this under?
Well, I like the first one.
How long?
I don't know, ten or fifteen minutes, hopefully.
Fifteen minutes?
Make sure you make it long enough, please. Cause you have to come back out of the executive session in that time that you guys put down.
Let's go twenty. And that we can come back, we can come out of it early. We just can't start.
You know, you can't come out of it early. You can't come out of it. You, I, I, you have to go out of it when you, when we start and you can't come out of it until that time.
Right. We can't start with a regular meeting until that time. We've never done anything at fifty. Let's go twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes. And who all?
I would like the commissioners, Noel, Quinn and Bauer, Attorney.
And Anderson.
Pat Henderson and Jody Moore.
And.
And myself, myself.
Okay. Uh, I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at one forty-seven P M. To discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. And the purpose of a closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and that the board come out of executive session at one fifty-seven P M. Or we can just, yeah, one fifty-seven on the Zoom platform and at the emergency operations centers. Two oh seven? All right, thank you. Doing math in my head again. One zero four four three U S Highway fifty-nine. And those present will be the three commissioners, Pat Henderson, County Counselor, Jody Moore, H R. And Joe Snyder, Roden Bridge.
Learn this at K A C when you're in an executive session, clear your place. Just learned this in my conference.
And then all the information has to be returned and destroyed after the meeting. You can't leave it on top of the table.
I'm really bad at keeping.
Had it two minutes for the start. And what I meant, what I meant was.
I should have just said, uh, two o'clock. And they, you don't have to say it's gonna be for thirty minutes and then have it approved.
But if we don't get through it, we can't come back out. I don't think you vote. Okay, all the favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you for inviting me. A lot of moving parts. Okay, we're, we're back in a regular session. Uh, I think we're gonna need another executive session. Eric, do you want to make a motion to that effect?
Yes, I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at two oh eight P M. To discuss personal matters of the non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee and have the board come out of the executive session at, how long, ten minutes, fifteen? So, two twenty-eight P M. On the Zoom platform at the Emergency Operations Center, ten four four three U S Highway fifty-nine. And those present will be, uh, Pat Henderson, the three commissioners, Joe Snyder and Jody Moore.
Second.
Move this, second all the favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
Pass us three to zero. Anybody have a public comment? Anybody? Any comments from the commissioners?
I think, um, I have more to add to that.
Do you have something, Mark?
Did you, you didn't have any before we did this?
Jack?
Yeah.
I have a question. This is.
Mary.
Okay. Uh, on the agenda for the workshop, I saw an item and it was like demo of the U Street Bridge. Or the U Street Viaduct, uh, strategizing.
Okay.
That.
I'll, I'll try to explain it the best I know.
Okay.
We get two different, uh, bridges to close in Atchison County. One's a 254th road. 52nd road, uh, the underpass and the other one's a U Street Bridge.
Okay.
Now, I don't know if the word demo is the correct nomenclature, Mary.
Uh, well, I think that's how it was worded. U Street Demo Strategy.
Mary, I can speak to that. I put it on there to get clarification because I put my notes on there of things I need to address with department heads. And I needed to ask our road and bridge, um, folks if it was demoed how, um, how that would happen. Because I had a constituent ask me that question. Um, so that would be my fault and, uh.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I appreciate you asking this question because that will better help me when submitting things to the girls of how it needs to be worded on, on the agendas.
Well, it, I had someone from the public bring that up to me and I'm like, well, I hadn't heard anything or seen anything. And I, I knew that it was an issue a couple of years ago and then I saw it on the workshop agenda, you know, and I didn't make it out this morning. But I, I wanted to be sure and ask and I wondered if it was, I knew KDOT had those programs.
Oh.
That would give county options.
I think that we found out about this by some memo line and some long email. And I think we discovered this, they really didn't come to us and say, this is our plans. We had to drag that out of them.
Okay.
So I, 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 I don't know if the city of Atchison is able to put more, uh, in, information on that.
Okay.
So, uh, I think the reason it was on there, it's a, it's a Commissioner Quinn's district.
Yeah.
So she felt like she should at least have a conversation about it.
Yeah.
The 252nd road is, affects several businesses, uh, and it put them under a lot of hardship. So I think it's a long discussion.
Okay.
It's a really early stages of both of them.
Okay, so it's something to keep an eye on, so, okay.
But we're being proactive, especially with 252nd road.
So. Okay.
And Joe or, uh, Kim at the Road and Bridge might be able to give you more information.
Okay. All right, so, yeah, that U Street Viaduct, that's very handy, you know, and well, as. And I'm sure that underpass or, you know, whatever it is, is pretty handy for a lot of people too, so, yeah.
Well, it affects businesses. Not that, I, I don't want anybody to be inconvenienced, but when it affects businesses and their cost structure and those type of things, their competition. That's, that's even a bigger.
Yeah, so, well, I've used that underpass too, so.
Anything else, Karen?
No, that's it. I just wanted to check on that. It took me a while to figure out how to operate this Zoom interaction, but.
Well, it seems like the whole world knows how to do Zoom now, so.
Yeah. Everybody but me, so, okay, well, thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Hold on. Uh, Eric, you have anything else?
I don't think so.
No. I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned 2:34.
I thought you were kind of interested in.
No, we're being.
I texted her and told her that we thought we were here.
Like, I missed the part of.
It totally said that.